What we can do is you can either vote to approve KHB and KHC, which would only make, um, school events and flyers possible to be able to be sent out. Not approve it. If you don't approve it and you want to make changes to the current policy, we can bring back a version that reflects what you spoke about today, but we would have to go back and make those, uh, changes.
Adjustments for the policy.
Yep.
I like your idea, Lauren, giving the autonomy back to the principal so that things are done timely. Um, but I would add that I would prefer everything to be electronic through Parent Square
Yeah.
rather than printed and handed out by our teachers. One, we're going to reduce resources on our copying machines or whatever.
Ellen did say she doesn't copy anything. If they want it to be paper, they have to provide it.
Even still, passing out the papers does take time and nine times out of 10, our custodians are probably picking them up off the floor. So we are probably going to have better communication with the families through Parent Square. So if, if the organization can just provide a digital copy and it's sent out that way.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all.
I'd also prefer that there be a disclaimer from the school on there saying that we don't support or endorse any programs. That way, if there's a situation where, um, God forbid, there's abuse or anything like that at one of these organizations, it's not tied back to the school.
We can ask. We can ask legal counsel if that's possible and what that would look like.
I think the only time that we've had questions about flyers that have come in front of us is if they were presented by a business. So, I can't remember.
It's like Everstool.
Yes, one of those. But that was the only one I ever remember us having concerns with, and it was because it was a business, so.
Correct.
It's just like, I feel like it didn't pertain to the kids really, but, yeah.
No, I mean, I, I feel like if it's from a for-profit business, it should still come to the school committee.
Yeah, I agree.
But if it's an in-town sports event activity, then I think it can be at the principal's discretion as long as it follows our other policies. So, I mean.
So you don't need a motion on those two if you want it remain the same and just have me bring it back?
Okay, so we don't need to make a?
On KHB and KHC if you're not going to motion to approve them.
So, okay, so we don't need to do anything with those?
No, we can just bring those back.
We don't need a motion to bring it back?
No.
Okay.
You can just ask me to bring it back.
Will you bring it back? Thank you. Um, and then now the other policies. Um, if someone wants to make a vote to waive the actual reading of those policies and approve them on a single read, um, you could do that. Does anyone?
I don't know the policies in front of me. Do you need me to read them all?
Um, is it, do you have? I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to vote to waive actual reading of policies JICFB, JKAA, and ACE and vote to approve in a single read per policy BGB policies JICFB, JKAA, and ACE.
Second.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Yes.
I, I.
Okay. Um, so my understanding is these are updates that we needed to make in order to be?
Compliant.
Compliant.
Mm-hmm.
Language that we needed to be compliant. And I know, I was in the policy meeting where we discussed it and it made sense to me, so I don't know if there's any discussion or if we want to just?
In order to vote to approve it?
Oh, we just.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. We're done. Okay. Okay. Great. Perfect. All right. All right. So now, um, approval of bill schedule?
Sorry, my computer just flashed on me. Our meetings are out of sync with the warrant cycle. There was a warrant that was due to the town on April 7th that went out as a single signature warrant. It was for $342,996.58. The next warrant is due to the town on May 5th, which will also be a single signature warrant.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, school committee correspondence and reports. I don't have any new business. Not aware of any. We already, we'll do, uh, subcommittees now. We already went through the policy negotiations. Um, we've had meetings with the HKA and also the custodians and are in process of that, so. Um, Pilgrim Area Collaborative? So they did meet. I unfortunately wasn't able to get to the meeting, so I don't have any updates for you at this time. Okay. Youth and rec, Katie?
Yep. So, um, an Easter egg hunt was held last Saturday. Three hundred children attended. Over four thousand eggs were found, and thanks to Bob Clancy for his support. The gym floor will be completed 4/21. A fifth grade, sixth grade dance for May is in the works, and they're also currently working on summer programs, and there's more information to come on that.
Great, thank you. PTO, our rep is not here. Capital budget didn't meet. Admin review?
Um, we have a meeting in the books, but, um, that's it.
Okay. Uh, DIB Subcommittee?
Did not read.
Okay. Unit 31 did have a meeting, and we went over data for?
For all of our.
Well, for all the elementary schools and also, oh, no, they did need the middle and high school as well.
Yep.
Okay.
And next week, and next week, how about next, next meeting, we will have, um, uh, more data as it relates to Halifax Elementary School specifically. We didn't go deep into the individual school data. We're going to do that at each of the, um, school committee meetings at the end of the year.
Okay. Um, our principal is sick and Christie's not here, so.
No update this evening.
No update. Okay. Um, Sarah?
So when I go through the financial report that I put in your digital folder, I go through and I make note of everything on there, and then I highlight anything that is new for, that I didn't talk to you about last time, seeking permission to just talk about the new things.
Sure.
So on page two of the financial report, that you will see that there's a school adjustment counselor. There's some school adjustment counselor lines, um, dot 2710, and those are over budget. That's two reasons for that. One is I've moved the school adjustment counselor out of the special ed lines where it was inappropriately put and moved it into guidance where it belongs because the school adjustment counselors are for all students. And then if you recall, we had a school adjustment counselor position that was reduced from 1.0 to 0.5 last year, and that person chose not to stay here, and Principal Bowdrey was unable to find somebody to come in and take a 0.5 position, and so we have had contracted services. So you'll see two lines for the school adjustment counselors. Also on page two, uh, gas and electric. So you'll notice with the gas and electric bills, it looks like they're overspent by huge amounts, and I wanted to point out that that is actually inaccurate, and what is, what has happened is when we, um, start out on the year, the accounts payable clerk encumbers money. So we know we're going to spend X amount of money on electric bills, so she sets aside that amount of money for the electric bills. That happened. And then, uh, the town manager reached out to us. He had negotiated a purchasing agreement, basically brought in, oversubscribed to net metering credits, and town manager had negotiated purchasing from them for 80 cents on the dollar. So, um, we're actually paying less for electricity than we would be, and we just need to clean up the old encumbrance in the system.
That's good news.
Yeah.
And then on?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
About the, um, school adjustment counselor. So that's a position that's been vacant all year, and we're filling it with two contracted services. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we will next year also have a 0.5 rec for that position because we didn't change anything.
Correct.
How likely is it that we're going to be able to find a 0.5, or are we going to continue to use contracted services? I know. Crystal ball time.
Right, crystal ball. Crystal ball and my good friend, uh, from HR is not here.
Yes.
So, um.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about how much that will increase what we budgeted for if we don't hire someone.
I thought that we also voted that we were going to take a different certification, which might be easier to fill the position with. I want to say that was like two or three meetings ago.
Was that for a speech or that was?
No, it was for, also for this. And.
Was that the BCBA?
Yes, we went from BCBA to some other certification. I forget now. But I'm wondering if the position has been reposted with the new certification requirement.
I can ask, um, when was the last time we reposted?
Because this is the prime time to find someone.
Mm-hmm.
And also, does, does any, do any of the other schools, do they have full time? So we can't like share with another school. Like Plimpton or something?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Someone's asked for a reduction in their hours, which I'm not aware of, but I don't believe so.
Okay, I'm just trying to think.
Sorry, I just hear contracted services.
Yes, the same is really expensive.
Let's just open our wall.
This is something I have been keeping track of. So we've had a certain amount of money budgeted for the salary of the 0.5, um, behaviorist, and, I'm sorry, school adjustment counselor, and I, um, met with Principal Bowdrey and said, this is how much you had set aside. This is how much you spent to date. This is how much you have for the rest of the year.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
When that money runs out, then I guess he would need to come here and ask for additional funds for that.
Okay.
Um, on page three, the special ed, so as I, as you've heard me say every month, there's a lot of moving parts with special ed, and the special ed bookkeeper maintains a separate spreadsheet which tracks the special ed contracted services, tuitions, and transportation, um, for those expenses, and then the, those are paid out of the operating budget, the circuit breaker account, and the 240 grant funds. Her, her spreadsheet, which was updated for this meeting, shows an overall surplus in these accounts for which we have allocated $200,000 of the circuit breaker money to be held, the FY25 circuit breaker, to be held to offset the FY26 budget. And as far, and for grants and donations, we have no new grants and donations at this time. And that concludes my report.
Okay, great. Uh, Dr. Clifford?
Okay, um, the first piece is on April 10th, there was a faculty report update on the strategy for district improvement with the Joint School Committee. We updated them on the strategy for district improvement and also gave an overview of 3-6 curriculum, a data, assessment data, and also 7-12 data, which, um, Dr. Clifford said we'll do more of a specific presentation to the Halifax School Committee coming up at the last, um, meeting this year. And as far as math is concerned, um, tomorrow, we have our last core program review team meeting, and at that meeting, we will, um, discuss the final tallies on the rubric, which all of the members of our committee filled out on two of the curriculums that we reviewed, HMH and I Ready, and so we will know the results of that. And, um, I will present more information on that decision when we meet for our last time here as a school committee. But we'll also be working soon to create, um, an implementation plan, which will be an activity timeline of how the curriculum will actually be implemented, which is just as important, if not more, than the actual selection of the curriculum. So I'll have more information on that. Um, and, um, professional development, this is really particular for, for Silver Lake Regional High School as far as co-teaching at the grade, um, nine and 10 level, but we'll be working with a consultant to really focus in on strengthening our co-teaching, um, abilities at the, at the high school in particular. And last, not least, we have a search committee that has been working last week on the director of special ed position, and we'll be interviewing, um, finalists this week. And for the Halifax Elementary School, we have convened a committee. We met today for an hour. Lauren was part of that committee. And we were able to go over the guidelines and the questions, and we have interviews set up Wednesday night and Thursday night, and then after that, um, we're hopeful to recommend to, at least two finalists to Dr. Prue. But on the 28th and 29th, we would like to bring each one of the candidates to Halifax Elementary School to meet with students, to meet with the administrative team, to meet with families, to meet with faculty and staff. And kind of spend time here roughly like one to five on those two days. There'll be an ability for people to provide feedback. I'll be here for both of those times with the candidate and, and collecting, um, I think written feedback is what we'll ask people to do when they come and, um, you know, watch the, or talk to the candidates. And then after that, um, the candidates will be interviewed with Dr. Prue. And so, uh, information will be coming out from the office here. Been working with Ellen on making sure that families are aware. We just, we'll send out that information and make sure everybody knows. So that's what's happening right now in that process. And that's everything I have.
Thank you.
Is there a way for us to view HMH and I Ready? Do we have the ability to review those curriculums ourselves?
Yep, you can go on Desi's website on curate.
Okay, yep.
If you have math, and you look at programs that are K through 5, meets all the way across, you'll see HMH and I Ready.
Okay.
That's probably the best place to really look, look at that, what they have got.
Okay, and then are we keeping IXL or are we getting rid of that?
Yep, IXL will stay.
Will stay, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Clifford?
Okay, I have two items, well, uh, two flyers and, um, then, uh, possible budget discussion. So the first is a flyer from South Shore Sabers. This is for profit. There is a registration fee of $150. Um, we're asking whether or not the school committee would like that to be distributed to parents.
It's for?
Um, I'm concerned because they're for profit. And I, I know, that's in, I, I mean.
It's getting, it's getting kids active at the same time, and it's so close.
I know, but I, I, I just don't like the fact that it's for profit and we have, we do have football that are, that is offered.
What is, I'm sorry, what is it for?
Tackle football.
It's a travel tackle football.
The second one is the South Shore Music and Arts Collaborative Summer Program. So, um, there is a fee with this, but it is a collaborative. It is an organization. And again, I, so while it is, um, not the same kind of, uh, program for profit, there is a fee associated with, uh, programs. So again, uh, if you're.
Well, I mean, the registration fee for this, I don't think, what is, how much is the registration fee for Silver Lake Youth Football? I'm pretty sure it's around the same.
Silver Lake Youth Football is a for-profit organization. It's not actually Silver Lake.
Right. I don't hate this, if I'm being honest. I don't mind, I wouldn't mind having this electronically be sent. I don't want papers, but I don't hate this. Uh, I, I like both, if I'm being honest. I would vote yes on both. Just to keep our kids active, I think there's, the more ways we can get parents in the know. I know that there's Google and all those things, but keeping the parents in the know, it's hard to find this stuff. My kids play football and I've never heard of this, so that's just my opinion.
So I'm very conflicted on this, um, because I don't love that it's, I, I hear what you're saying, Jessica, um, but I don't love that it's like a for-profit. Um, I also know when I was a parent, there were times when I asked, um, at the middle school level for us to share flyers for a particular summer camp called PCC, which is an incredible program. That program no longer exists anymore because of low enrollment, largely because they couldn't get information up to schools. So I hear what you're saying about wanting to get kids the information. But, you know, I think this is a slippery slope. Like when you let one in, then it's, you know, it's, well, you let that one do it, you can't, you know. So I am very conflicted. I, I don't know. I feel like there's other ways that they can get that information. So for me, I think it's a no, because I, again, I just, I feel like we are opening up a can of worms that, um, is going to be difficult for us.
I feel like we need to create some more guidelines because while I agree that both of these are worthwhile organizations for our kids to be involved in, I just want there to be some consistency with how we're deciding. And right now, I don't feel as though we have an agreement on, on guidelines.
Well, one thing too that I think too is both of these are outside of our school district, and I think of equity and people's ability to get places and pay for them.
Mm-hmm.
And while I, I mean, I think of Silver Lake Youth Football as more like Halifax Youth Soccer and things like that, and which, um, is community building. Like I think Silver Lake Youth Football is helpful for kids going to middle school, but I worry about, and again, like I'm not, I think both of those programs are fine and wonderful, but I agree, and I would kind of rather stick to things that are in our district to sort of limit what we do allow, and especially since those, well, I don't know if the music one is up for profit or?
Well, it appears that they're charging to at least cover the cost of the programming.
Okay. Well, and it's hard to know because we don't know what their, you know, tax status is, right?
Right. This says right here, they're about us. The South Shore Sabers Youth Football, Inc. exists to function exclusively for charitable purposes, to provide recreational sports activities for ages five to 13, youth of lakeful and surrounding areas. The programs seek to provide opportunities that promote skill development, sportsmanship, and positive self-prove. All programs promote volunteerism, community, and parental involvement in the activities that are economically feasible and realistic for all families.
So I'm just going to really doubles advocate a little bit. I mean, all that sounds good, but like if the local karate place, which is a for-profit, said, we're having summer sessions, and can you please advertise this? Like again, that gives, that gives kids great values, but they're a for-profit business. I don't know that I'm comfortable with that. And I feel like we're endorsing for-profit businesses, which is not the role of the school. It's not just providing information. When it comes from the school, it can be seen as an endorsement.
I agree.
You're right.
Which kind of brings me back to the disclaimer that I was hoping that we can add. So that, one, it does show that we're not endorsing any one particular organization for a multitude of reasons, but liability for certain.
You could ask them to provide their tax filings status.
Sure, but it also goes back to, I'm trying not to create more work for our admin. So like, it's like we're trying to balance all these things, you know?
They give you two pieces of paper.
Okay. No, I mean, I, I think that's fair, that I would like to know their tax status because I, I'm not comfortable endorsing for-profit organizations.
I almost.
You know, no matter how great what they're doing is, I don't think as a school, we should, especially, you don't know if they offer, like I just think, you know, again, there's transportation concerns. There's, um, financial concerns that I, you know, but anyway.
So what I was going to ask is, and, um, forgive me, I'm a school talk mom and my memory's gone, but do things like, um, the Halifax Hurricanes or like All-Star teams that Halifax does during the, the summer months, do they get school support in sending out like, hey, we're having tryouts, or is that all done kind of like at a rec-down league level?
I know basketball does.
Recreation tends to come through the school.
Right.
The difficult part, and, and I would discourage, quite frankly, any for-profits because sometimes you have individuals who live in town, but they're making a pro, profit off of particular camps. It becomes very difficult to say yes to some and no to others. And consider when something that you don't necessarily endorse or you find controversial asks for the same.
Yeah.
Opportunity. So those are the things you have to consider when you say yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it, it's the consistency piece that can get challenging. But I'm just trying to, like, again, like I know there's a basketball league and then there's, you know, that are all-star leagues. They're not, or travel teams. Like, to my recollection, I don't remember stuff like that coming through the school. That was usually like, hey, at the last meeting, just so you know, this is tryouts for the All-Star or the travel team or whatever. It was that community of players that were playing in town, found the information up that way. It was more targeted. So I don't know. I, again, I also worry about traveling. The message gets messy for me when it comes through the school.
I think we should definitely support any activity we can for our kids. However, for consistency, perhaps they fill out an application that goes with whatever flyer. So we have more information. Are you a 503 organization? When is your event? Who is invited to this event? Like just getting some more background information other than just a flyer. Because if this organization was here, we could ask them these questions and have an answer today. But since they're not here, we really don't have a whole lot to go off of other than any research we do on Google really quick or our own personal background on these organizations.
One of the policies we're written to, um, only include things in Kingston, Halifax, Plimpton, and that would also naturally limit, right, the, um, funds that are brought for consideration, which I think is fair to do. I think it's fair to limit to Kingston, Halifax, Plimpton. You know, just because I, I think.
I agree, but, but to Lori's point, we could have many organizations with, or businesses.
Nonprofit, I mean.
Okay, nonprofit, thank you.
Like, I mean, like, you know.
Yeah, thank you for the clarity.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I meant definitely nonprofit Halifax.
Based.
Yes, which, with that sort of parameter that I hope we can get into a, a new policy that?
Yeah.
Would, you know, it's community building. That's, you know, that's, in my opinion. It's good for the kids. It's community building, and it sort of makes a nice line so that we're not having to have, entertain, you know, if you're not in Kingston, Plimpton, or Halifax, it can easily just say, I'm sorry, we only share things in our community that are for nonprofits. Like I think that's a, personally, I think that's a good line to have.
Okay. So next meeting, we will bring back revised guidance.
Do we need to make a motion on this, or since we're not doing anything, we don't have to do anything?
You don't have to do any.
Okay. All right. Um, oh, yeah.
And then if these organizations are listening, I mean, there's always Facebook. Post it and share it.
Great. So then the next item is here, if in fact it is the will of the committee to reconsider the budget vote in light of, um, the Board of Selectmen meeting, um, where it is my understanding that they approved or they recommended a budget that was approximately $32,000 less than what, um, the school committee had approved. So, um, this is here just in case the school committee wanted to revisit, um, prior to the town meeting.
And that being that if we revisit it, it will hopefully make town meeting be more streamlined so that we can more easily get our school budget passed, which is in so much better shape than it was. So.
My question is, is where are we pulling this $32,000 from? Any recommendations from administration?
Yes.
Yes, the salary line. There was one teacher that was part of the three teachers. The, um, the retirement was a, a teacher who had salary who was considerably higher than the $70,000 we were, so we had said, said, three teachers, $70,210,000. So it would be no additional cuts over what we already did.
Okay.
Is that a win? Did we just win again?
Yes, we just won.
We did. So if we were to amend, which I would be nice for town meeting because we're still going to need the support of the town because they are using free cash to cover the difference.
Well, if it doesn't pass an override of what, then we'd be asking for an override of $32,000, and if it doesn't pass, then we lose it all, correct?
No, we're not asking for an override at all.
We wouldn't. But if we don't say this.
Oh, if we don't, it would probably have to be amended on the town hall floor, and it would just.
It'd make it messy.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, well, I guess, I mean, unless there, I, I'll make a motion. We can have more discussion, but just read all of it? Okay, I will make a motion to that Halifax School Committee approve $7,615,813 as the fiscal 2026 local education budget, operating budget, and further that the total appropriation of $7,615,813 is in compliance with the Education Reform Act of 1993 and is. with the Education Reform Act of 1993, and is recommended by the superintendent of schools. And further, the school committee directs the superintendent to allocate the following additional funding sources, which total $387,576. FY26 anticipated circuit breaker special education reimbursement of $132,705. FY25 circuit breaker carryover of $200,000, and anticipated FY26 grant revolving account funding totaling $54,871. The final approved expenditures for the schools will be $8,389,000.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
We just had it, right?
Yeah, I just, okay. I'll do a roll call for this one. Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
And thank you to the Board of Selectmen and the FINCOM and everybody else that helped us figure it out without an override.
And Sarah.
And Sarah, big time, who never slept, still isn't sleeping.
Sarah, will you, will you be sending the new number to the town?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we still need to encourage people to support the school budget and to come to town meeting.
Yes, please.
And their lawmakers, because we're going to be in the same spot next year.
I've been, I've gone to a few things with lawmakers to plead for a change in the amount of factor 70 funding for student, and doing the best we can. And we're not the only school, like it's comforting but also frustrating that we're not the only ones in this situation, but still, hopefully, we're heard and things hopefully can be better next year. All right, so I will, the next dates are April 18th, this Friday, no school for Good Friday, April 21st to 25th is school vacation. Our next meeting is May 12th. Is that, are we having a meeting before the town meeting, or is that just because we'll be at town meeting?
I believe we do that because we're going to be at town meeting.
And we might have a horse.
An open meeting, okay. So we're not having a meeting here first, because we don't need to, because we-
No, sometimes we, in the past, we've done it as like a little buffer in case something had to be met, you know, fixed before we get there. But at this point, we have nothing.
Great.
So it's just there to protect us.
We have nothing. We're ready. We're ready, I know. The way it was said.
We're ready in the best possible way.
Exactly, we're prepared. We're prepared. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
As moved.
Thank you, and all in favor?
Hi.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
You too.